This conference will now be recorded.
Welcome to the August 18th South Whitehall Township Planning Commission meeting. Everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic for which we stand, a nation under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Greg, would you like to do the roll call?
Absolutely. Trevor Donbach.
Here.
Tim Dugan. Not here. Andrew Flag.
Here.
Brian Height.
Here.
Diane Kelly.
Here.
Mark Luth.
Here.
David Wilson.
Here.
Six members are present, sufficient for a quorum.
Would you like to go over the meeting rules, Greg?
Absolutely. For an orderly meeting wherein all attendees may be able to fully participate, we ask that you adhere to the following rules. Please mute your microphone or telephone to avoid background noise that may cause interference in the meeting and make it difficult for others to hear. Staff may mute microphones of remote attendees if needed. Public questions and comments will be taken at periodic intervals throughout the agenda. We will start with no time limits, but the Planning Commission Chairman may impose a time limitation if there are many questions or if the meeting is running short on time. For in-person attendees, please raise your hand to be recognized and then move to the podium when directed and state your name, address, and your comment or question. Please turn the podium microphone on before speaking and off when done. For remote attendees, the chat box feature will be active throughout the meeting. If you have a comment or question, please type your full name and address in the chat box. When you are recognized and so directed, please unmute your microphone and state your comment or question. Mute your microphone when done. For those who are accessing the meeting by phone only, staff will periodically ask for caller comments and unmute any callers. Callers must identify their name and address prior to making a comment. Your cooperation and adherence with these rules will ensure an orderly and respectful meeting. Thank you.
All right, we're on Agenda Item Number Three, Review of the July Planning Commission Meeting Minutes. Does anyone have any comments? Page four, paragraph six. It noted, he noted that traffic exiting the drive-through much must encroach into the sidewalk. It should be crosswalk. That's my only edit. No one has any comments? Would someone like to make a motion?
No motion.
Second?
Second.
Any further comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
I abstain, I was not present.
The ayes have it. Motion passes. Agenda Item Number Five, Subdivision Review. Greg, would you like? Oh, I apologize. Agenda Item Number Four, Comp Plan Preview and the Comp Plan Update. We're combining Agenda Item Seven with Four. Dave, would you like to provide the preview and update?
Yes, so we had to cancel the last workshop meeting, and in order to remain on schedule, we prepared some online forms to solicit comments from the boards. I did go back through the land use section, and I think one of the most, probably the, when we were going to have the in-person meeting, we were going to explain the bounding roads and things like that. They may not be as apparent on the maps when you're looking at them, so I would suggest as you're, we still have a few people that still need to comment. So as you're going through it, keep the main window open that has the overall map. That'll give you a better idea of where the areas are in the township. So we're going to use those comments. We're going to close that on Friday, and those comments will come back with a draft of land use goals, strategies, and kind of move forward with the comp plan for the next workshop. And as always, feel free to call. We're here in the office, and we can walk you through it if you have any questions.
Does anyone in the audience have any comments or questions about the comp plan? All right. Agenda Item Number Five, Subdivision Review, Montar Properties LLC Self-Storage Facility. Greg, would you like to do the staff presentation?
This is an application to further develop the properties located at 3350 and 3354 Walbert Avenue. The plan proposes to consolidate the two parcels, raise the existing residential and agricultural structures, and construct a three-story, 112,800 square foot self-storage facility, a 16-space parking lot, and associated stormwater management facilities on the 2.007 acre parcel. The property is served by public water and sewer and is Zoned General Commercial 1, Special Height Limitation GC1. 3354 Walbert Avenue Associates LP is the owner. TAC Allentown LLC is the applicant. The Community Development Department recommends that the Planning Commission take the plan under advisement to afford the applicant the time necessary to address the reviewing agency's comments. Our recommendation is contingent upon the applicant granting township a waiver from the timeframe in which to act upon the plan. The Planning Commission's soft deadline to act on the plan is September 19, 2022. The Board of Commissioners's hard deadline to act on the plan is October 19, 2022.
May I present?
Good evening. Greg Adelman here on behalf of the applicant. And Greg, it's nice to have a Greg with two Gs, too. Thank you for the introduction. We're the same. We're a rarity. Greg did a very nice summary of the application. It's a pretty simple proposed development of a self-storage facility on Walbert. Just for the planning commission's background, we did go and obtain a couple of variances with respect to the proposed development, dealing with minimum lot size and I believe was minimum lot frontage, which the zoning hearing board granted. We are in the process of reviewing your comments from the different professionals, and we'll respond to them. We did not see anything in our first review that was insurmountable. We didn't see anything that was really overly substantive, a lot of cleanup, some additional information and clarification, but we didn't see any additional zoning issues or any subdivision land development or stormwater issues that we think will present any problems with respect to the proposed development. But in a nutshell, it is a self-storage facility, about total 112,000 square feet of area, three stories, approximately 37,000 square foot footprint. The access is lined straight up with Yellowstone Road, proposed to be a full movement as of right now. We have submittal into Pendot, waiting to hear back on their comments with respect to the proposed access. As you could see on the screen that was put up, the stormwater is proposed to be underground in the front of the facility, and then the stormwater flow will then be channeled via pipe to the rear, the south portion of the property, to be discharged via a level spreader that would then sheet flow off the property into a sumped area between the proposed building and where the UPS and Target store are located. That's where the water currently flows now. Overall, we don't see much parking demand at a self-storage facilities. That's why you see 16 spaces. That's probably more than what we would need. There are two ADA spaces being provided in conformance with the code requirements. We have landscaping being proposed. There is a trash enclosure. If we go back to the landscaping plan, I think it was one of the ones that was missed. There's a trash enclosure in the right-hand corner on the eastern side. It is screened in that location, so we'll point that out in our responses. But overall, we're really here to get the planning commission's comments, if you have any, with respects of the plan, so that we can help incorporate them in our responses, and then resubmit and come back before you, hopefully at your next meeting, for seeking a recommendation. That's it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. It's a boring land development. Most of mine have some controversy.
You can make it exciting if you want.
Please. I have enough excitement with most of the ones I do, but in this one, it's pretty straightforward.
My first question is vehicle maneuvering, garbage truck maneuvering, fire truck access. I have concern about box trucks or the garbage truck coming in, and then how does it turn around and get out? And then, I understand public safety approved generally gave the okay for it, but I'm just curious how fire protection is provided along the east, south, and west sides of the building.
Right. And maybe Mary from Bowler can give you some more information, but the building obviously will have to be, I believe, sprinkled in accordance with the building code. But come on up, Mary. I'm sorry, there's only one mic. If you can please answer the question. I think we did supply auto turn, right?
We did not, but we will supply truck turning analysis, so we will do a box truck. It's the largest that is anticipated by the use, as well as the trash truck. Trash trucks are generally smaller and more maneuverable than you think they are. So with the fact that the spaces aren't really all utilized, at this point, they're intended to back up into an empty space.
But we'll show that. I mean, operationally, we don't expect to have many cars parked there at one time. You'll see, as I'm sure everyone knows, self-storage, you don't have 16 people showing up.
About emergency vehicles?
What did we look at for the? Fire truck, right? Is that what you were asking about?
We'll bring a fire truck in and out of the site, but again, in an emergency situation, go wherever they want. So if we need to provide more adequate access, then based on the truck movers, then we'll widen radii.
We have plenty of impervious coverage allowance left. I believe we're at like 53% where 75% is permitted. So we, not that we want to put more paving, but if we have to, to permit the maneuverability, we'll certainly add that.
What are your intended hours of operation for this facility?
Frank Akura, our principal is here. He can introduce himself and say hi.
Hi, I'm with the developer. Typically, the office hours are from 9:00 AM to approximately 6:00 PM. In some cases, they do have extended hours, which is typically two hours before the office opens, two hours afterwards. So it's not a 24-hour access property. So typically, I would say between 7:00 AM and 9:00 PM.
Thank you.
And I just want to say, I do concur with the number of parking spaces. On a facility of this size, we will probably have maybe four to five people on-site at any one time, and that's typically on the weekend. It is very minimal traffic flow for these types of facilities.
And I have one other follow-up. There's a residence to the west of the proposed facility. Has there been consideration to provide buffer, both for any lighting or robbery landscaping to?
So there is the required 15-foot buffer yard on that side, and there is existing vegetation, which we are seeking credit for. Should there be sparse areas that do not qualify for credit, we can add additional plantings in those areas. And from a lighting standpoint, we will comply with property line minimum costs.
Thank you.
I have a question for you. Have you built a facility like this that you're proposing somewhere else?
So I was with public storage for 23 years. I'll be built 400 to 500 storage facilities throughout my career.
Great, but I'm asking about the intended facility to go in this parcel. Have you built an identical or somewhat close to building like that?
Yes.
And what is the architectural look and feel of that building?
Typically, along the front of the building, where you have a lot of pedestrian traffic, we'll do a brick Wayne's coat along the front, and then you do a lead-certified metal insulated panel on the outside, and then we'll have like a little tower element just to show people where your office is, some storefront.
Not the roll-up garage.
No.
The old public storage, the orange ones.
There will be no exterior.
The lower level is some brick-type surface, and then it's just aluminum or something that goes all the way to the?
Yes, it's aluminum metal insulated panel, and it's incredible R-value, and it meets or above what the energy code requires.
Yeah, no, I'm concerned about the aesthetic value, not anything else. And a flat roof, I assume?
I call it low slope, but yes. Yeah, a quarter and 12 roof, which is the lowest slope you're allowed by code. White membrane roof, so.
And colors of this building?
It'll be beige and brown colors, earth tones. Obviously, there'll be some accent colors, but yeah, the body of it will be beige and light colors.
Is there any chance you could provide photos of other existing facilities that you believe this facility may mimic in terms of architectural aesthetics and facade?
Yeah, we're very conscious of Walbert Avenue. It's our main street in South Whitehall, so we're glad that we're seeing a redevelopment occur there, but we also want to make sure it's a good fit aesthetics-wise.
And we do, as you look at the landscaping plan, we do have buffer some of the view.
And speaking of the the street corridor, we do have a very large project that will be affecting the entirety of this corridor. Have you coordinated with Lang and Engineering at all in terms of getting their CAD files to incorporate those road widening?
So we do have a copy of the HOP plans for the widening along Walbert, and we are receipt of the CAD file for that as well. So one of the comments is to incorporate those revisions, and it looks like mainly across our frontage, it should be on the opposite side of the road where the improvements are occurring, but we will incorporate those into our plan.
So I know that Lanta, our transit provider in the Leah Valley, hasn't given their comments, but there's a bus stop right at the corner of your property that's very active. So I would like to see that, when their comments come in, that you try to incorporate their needs, because this is a very popular bus stop.
Yes, we did actually seek their comments before submission, so we did have preliminary comments via email that I believe we passed along, and if not, we'll include them in our next submission. But what they're looking for is a concrete pad at the existing sign, and we'll incorporate that into the street frontage.
Okay. Yeah, they like, it was probably moly wood, and they like the concrete pad for ADA, because they don't want it at street level, because the bus kneels down just a certain level, so. Okay.
Would the applicant be willing to provide that concrete pad and shelter? Because I know Lanta typically, a lot of times, they're out of stock. Okay, okay. In terms of street corridor again, what's the general timing? Because there's a project right across the street, like I said, that will impact the road layout and whatnot. Do you have a development, you know, a development schedule?
Can you speak into the mic, because they can't hear online otherwise? Thank you.
So our internal schedule and getting all the approvals is Q1 of next year. We're hoping that we could start right when the weather breaks and be done by the end of the year.
Thank you.
You have not done your stormwater testing yet.
Did, but we just got it in. So we have it now, but it was not included in the submission. That will be in the next submission. The first submission included rates based on ET, if we had to. Actually, we were using that.
My final question is, is how many units are going to be in the facility, and what's the size range, like smallest to biggest?
So the size range, it goes from a 5-by-5 unit up to a 10-by-30. And I will say, on the larger-sized units, it's 10-by-20s and 10-by-30s, maybe 10% of the overall count. The average unit size will be about a 10-by-10, 98 square feet, I believe it is. So we're going to have about 750 units in this project.
And are they all, I'm assuming, I shouldn't assume, temperature-controlled?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
No worries.
You guys can stay up. If you want.
Now we're not going to have any more questions.
Now they're done. I could have said that earlier.
If you want the questions, Dan, you should stand.
That's right. Just stand here and stare like that.
You get your steps in.
That's it. That's true, too.
I guess I have one more question about your stormwater.
Sure. Come on up, Mary.
You have underground storage in the front of the building, obviously a little higher than the backside of the building. So you have an overflow created for your release back to that level lip spreader that is no greater than what's leaving the site today?
Yes, so actually, this is an interesting, if you enjoy some stormwater, this is an interesting site in that it, all of our conveyance is accounted for through the shopping center, goes to their basin, which is pumped then to the regional dam. So we looked through the prior storm reports, and going back to '94 and then I think 2001, our lot was accounted for as an offsite drainage area. So we are meeting and reducing on the 2- through 100-year storms on both rate and volume, so that we don't have to model downstream conveyance.
Interesting.
Do we have any other? Anyone in the audience sitting here or online? Please come up to the podium.
Hi, my name is Lori Forsberg. I'm at 1606 Shenandoah Court, right across from where you're building this. Is the only entrance into there through going into Target where that bank is, or are you going to have another entrance into that facility? The one that they go? And that's?
Do you two want to share the microphone?
I know them. I didn't want to impose in these days of COVID.
It's all good.
I apologize. I am too. I am too. Thank you. No, it's really fine. No, because I'm, that's all right.
Strange times we live in.
You never know. I mean, before then, I would never have had a problem. So the access is, as you can see, the northwestern corner. That's the only access coming in and outside. So nothing else is connecting or anything.
Okay, because I just heard about an extension about Yellowstone, so I was concerned that you were coming across the street.
No, that's it.
No.
Just right.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Anything online?
Okay, with that, I guess we'll be coming back.
We'll make a motion to table. Okay, I'll make that motion.
Second. Greg, can we do a roll call? Are there any further comments?
Contingent on a time extension.
Yeah, I was just about to say that we'll submit an extension as required and requested. We'll come back with our resubmission and then appear before the planning commission again. We'll follow up with an email or letter, whatever you need.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You have time, so.
Great.
Okay. Roll call, vote? Did I get this right? Trevor Donbach?
Yes.
Andrew Flag?
Yes.
Brian Height?
Yeah.
Diane Kelly?
Aye.
Mark Luth? David Wilson?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you for your time this evening. Appreciate it. See you in.
All right, the next project is Church Road Pata Property LLC. Greg, would you like to do the staff presentation?
Absolutely. This is an application to further develop the property located at 1670 Church Road. The plan proposes to renovate the existing commercial building, construct a 23-space parking lot, and stormwater management facility on the 3.4912 acre parcel. The property is zoned Industrial Commercial 1, Special Height Limitation IC1. Pata Property LLC is the owner and applicant. The Community Development Department recommends, the Planning Commission recommend preliminary final plan approval to the Board of Commissioners subject to the applicant complying with the following conditions. One, that the applicant shall execute subdivision improvement, security, maintenance, and indemnification agreements acceptable to township and its solicitor; that sufficient security in a form acceptable to township be posted; that such security shall be available for draws, presentations, no further than 60 miles from township's office; and evidence of insurance coverage in an amount satisfactory to township in its sole discretion shall be provided prior to the plan being recorded. Two, that the applicant shall address to the satisfaction township engineer the comments of Mr. Anthony Talaredek as contained in his review dated August 11, 2022. Three, that the applicant shall address to the satisfaction township order and sewer engineer the comments of Mr. Jason Newhart as contained in his review dated August 12, 2022. Four, that the applicant shall address to the satisfaction township geotechnical consultant the comments of Mr. Chris Taylor as contained in his review dated August 10, 2022. Five, that the applicant shall address to the satisfaction Town, community development department the comments of Mr. Greg Adams as contained in his review dated August 12, 2022. Six, that the applicant shall address to the satisfaction the public works department the comments of Mr. Herb Bender as contained in his review dated August 10, 2022. Seven, that the applicant shall obtain a review from the LVPC prior to the plan being presented to the South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners. Eight, that the applicant shall obtain a letter from PADEP approving the NPDES permit application pursuant to Section 312-39E of SALDO. Nine, that the applicant shall obtain a letter from PADEP approving the sewage facilities planning module or an exemption thereto. Ten, that the applicant shall comply with the March 15, 2022 recommendation of the Parks and Rec Board. Eleven, the applicant shall comply with the July 29, 2022 recommendation of the Landscape and Shade Tree Commission. Twelve, that the applicant shall address all issues and obtain all approvals deemed necessary by the South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners insofar as matters pertaining the township's water and sewer service are concerned. Thirteen, that the applicant shall dedicate to the township additional right-of-way along the fringe of Church Road at a width acceptable to township for the construction of proposed right-of-way improvements. The dedication shall occur prior to the plan being recorded. The dedication shall be by deed of dedication in a form acceptable to township solicitor, and an opinion of record title shall be prepared by the applicant's counsel indicating the dedication is free and clear of liens and encumbrances that would affect the township's use of said property. The applicant shall furnish to the township solicitor a description of, for the dedication that has been approved by the township engineer, and a copy of the current deed for the property showing the current ownership and recording information. Fourteen, that the applicant shall dedicate to the township additional right-of-way along fringe of Church Road at a width acceptable to the township at such time as the township Board of Commissioners shall require in the event of future right-of-way improvements projects that necessitate the dedication. The right-of-way areas to be dedicated in the future shall be depicted, shall be depicted on the plan with a note stating the terms of the future dedication with language acceptable to the township solicitor. The dedication shall be by deed of dedication in a form acceptable to township solicitor, and an opinion of record title shall be prepared by the applicant's counsel indicating that the dedication is free and clear of liens and encumbrances that would affect the township's use of said property. The applicant shall furnish to the township solicitor a description of the dedication that has been approved by the township engineer, and a copy of the current deed for the property showing current ownership and recording information. Fifteen, that the applicant shall dedicate to the township an easement, a utility easement of sufficient size in an area acceptable to the township for accessing the water meter pit. The dedication shall occur prior to the plan being recorded. The dedication shall be by deed of dedication in a form acceptable to the township solicitor, and an opinion of record title shall be prepared by the applicant's counsel indicating that dedication is free and clear of liens and encumbrances that would affect the township's use of said property. The applicant shall furnish to the township solicitor a description of the dedication that has been approved by the township engineer, and a copy of the current deed for the property showing the current ownership and recording information. Sixteen, that the applicant shall secure from the township a utility easement of sufficient size in an area acceptable to township within the right-of-way of Church Road for constructing and maintaining. within the right-of-way of Church Road for constructing and maintaining the water service line. The recording of the deed of easement shall occur prior to the plan being recorded. The deed of easement shall be in a form acceptable to township solicitor, and the applicant shall furnish to the township solicitor a description of the easement, for the easement, that has been approved by the township engineer. Seventeen, that the applicant shall secure from the township a utility easement of sufficient size in an area acceptable to township within the right-of-way of Church Road for constructing and maintaining the force main sanitary sewer service line. The recording of the deeds of easement shall occur prior to the plan being recorded. The deed of easement shall be in a form acceptable to township solicitor, and the applicant shall furnish to the township solicitor a description of the easement that has been approved by the township engineer. Eighteen, if deemed to be necessary, the applicant shall be responsible for making necessary arrangements with the municipality and the public service company involved for streetlights as approved by the board of commissioners, and shall further be responsible for providing utility easements for lighting standards and fixtures in accordance with SALDO section three twelve forty-one A one A of SALDO. Nineteen, that the declaration of covenants and easements for the maintenance of stormwater management facilities prepared by the township solicitor shall be executed for the maintenance of the onsite stormwater management facility. Twenty, that the applicant shall reconcile all open invoices for township engineering and legal services prior to the plan being recorded. And twenty-one, that the plans be revised and deemed to be clean prior to them being presented to the board of commissioners. The planning commission's soft deadline to act on the plan is September nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. The board of commissioners' hard deadline to act on the plan is October nineteenth, twenty twenty-two.
All right, the applicant may do your presentation.
Good evening. Kevin Markle with Barry Isit and Associates. We've been before you, I think, twice now with sketch plans. So this is something we've all seen before. The plan is pretty much the same as we presented with our sketch plans. I think we worked through a lot of the planning issues during that sketch plan process. So really, we're here. We've seen the letters, read the conditions. We have no arguments. I guess probably the one thing to discuss would be the waivers and deferrals requested. To go over those. So we're straight and clear. Unless there's other topics that the commission would like to discuss.
Yep. I personally don't have any comments. I know we've gone through a few iterations with presentations and designs. So I know you've coordinated a lot with township staff and engineering. Yeah, I think it's just the waivers. I didn't see a letter. Typically, we like to see the reasoning and justification for the waiver. So if you could go over that.
Yeah, there were, I have copies if everybody.
I may have missed it.
Doesn't have, I have copies with me, too.
Thank you.
Some of these we did discuss previously with the sketch plan, the ones pertaining to the roadway. There have been some new ones that we included now that we're here with the land development plan. So I'll just run through these one by one if that's okay.
If you could, just the one, the new ones, cuz we already discussed the old ones.
Okay, certainly. The first one that is different or new from the sketch plan would be waiver request number one, which has to do with providing contours on adjacent land within four hundred feet of the site. We do show topography within one hundred and fifty to two hundred feet of the site for the immediate surrounding area on the plans. And we also have the USGS map, which then does show topography within the required limit. But for the actual plan view itself, we're at two hundred feet as opposed to the four hundred feet. We feel it provides enough, enough information for the review of the plan.
And Tony, you're good with that?
Yes, that's correct. They actually have, they're bounded by external roads, railroads. So we're confident with this, comfortable with recommending this.
Thank you.
The next one is number two in my letter, which is a waiver request to show or to not show all sidewalk trails, driveway streets, easements, and rights-of-way within four hundred feet of the site. Again, we show everything within about two hundred to three hundred feet of the site. And, you know, there's really nothing else outside of there that's going to be impacted by this development. So we feel what we show is adequate for the review of the plans. And to show anything more, we would have to have a plan at a very large scale that really wouldn't be legible.
Same response.
The next request that is new is number three on my letter, which is a waiver request to not construct a concrete driveway apron at the proposed driveway, and instead leave it just with by-two-minute pavement. For an industrial facility like this, it just seems like it'd be more appropriate for a regular by-two-minute driveway.
Are you gonna mark the crosswalk?
We certainly can. We don't at this time, but we do have the ADA ramps, and it wouldn't be a problem.
I think it's appropriate.
Not a problem.
Other facilities.
We do have it graded. We did grade the driveway for the two percent cross slope.
Right.
Like you would with a crossover. But yes, we can certainly add the crosswalk.
I think it just presents, communicates to drivers that there might be a pedestrian in it.
That's fine.
Especially with your wide driveway. So, thank you.
Next one that is new from what we've discussed before would be waiver request number seven in my letter, which is a waiver request to allow a driveway width of sixty-nine feet at the right-of-way as opposed to the ordinance requirement of forty. Again, the additional driveway width is necessary to allow the truck turning movements for the site. And the last one that is new from what we previously reviewed with the sketch plans is waiver request number eight, which is a waiver request to not provide streetlights along Church Road. There are no other streetlights anywhere along Housman or Church Road. We do have our internal site with street, with parking lot lighting. So this is just a request to not provide it for the street.
And those lights are gonna light up the driveway?
Correct. Yes.
At the access point?
Correct. Yes.
Would you consider a deferral?
If that's the direction of the commission and the board of commissioners, I don't think we'd be objected to a deferral as opposed to a waiver.
I think that would be a good idea.
Because I know a lot of our residents in the township do like the dark skies and like to avoid light pollution. And just with the extra right-of-way that was dedicated, personally, I wouldn't wanna put streetlights in right now, and then the improvements are done later down future, and then they have to get ripped out and put back in.
Yeah, we have no objection to changing that to a deferral request if that's.
All right, so we have five waiver requests. Are there any other questions about those waivers? If not, we could run through them one by one. And the first waiver request was from SALDO section three twelve dash twelve B fifteen. Does anyone want to make a motion?
I moved.
Anyone like to second?
Second.
Any comments? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it, so moved. Waiver number two is SALDO section three twelve dash twelve B twenty-one. Would anyone like to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion passes. Waiver number three, SALDO section three twelve dash thirty-five B three A four. This waiver request also has the stipulation to provide a painted crosswalk. Would anyone like to make a motion?
So moved.
I'll second it. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. The fourth waiver request is number seven on the July twenty letter, and that is SALDO section three twelve dash thirty-six C five A. Would someone like to make a motion?
So moved.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. And the fifth and final waiver or deferral, deferral is number eight, and that is SALDO section three twelve dash forty-one A one A. Would anyone like to make a motion?
So moved.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion passes.
I do have a question before we get to the big vote. Actually, they're all important, but I wanna make sure that the applicant is comfortable with, we're discussing the future utilization of Church Road.
Yes.
And whether, I think I asked you this during the sketch plan review of whether you would be okay with us marking the frontage of your property or the frontage of Church Road as no parking to prevent trucks from showing up early in various hours. And would you also be okay if, in the future, that we would restrict trucks from crossing over the railroad tracks? Just because of the turn radius in a sleeper cab that can't look, I have a CDL. I actually helped the driver get through that intersection once, so.
No objections.
And the last one, and I don't think you will have an objection of this, is right now, there's no supposed speed limit. And I think for, as that project or that building becomes redeveloped, now we're gonna be adding more cars there. I think it's important that we post that as a speed limit. So if you're okay with those.
Yeah, no, no objections.
I just wanted to get that on the record. Thank you.
Okay, so it looks like there would be three additional conditions of recommendation, and that would be as Mr. Height stated that the applicant upon the township ordinances being passed, the applicant would provide the marking along this frontage for no parking. The second item would be, upon the township ordinances being enacted, the applicant would install a speed limit sign along the property frontage. And the third condition would be the applicant would provide the appropriate signage to restrict trucks from passing over the railroad tracks.
So I don't know if those are conditions of the approval because they're township functions.
Okay.
And I think Mr. Height put it on the record to see that they're okay with it. I don't know unless I'm wrong, Jennifer, but I think they're just put on the record for.
Yeah, I think the intention was to simply garner from the applicant whether they would accept that should they need to adopt something in the future.
Right. My main thought was I didn't wanna harm their project by making those conditions. And no offense to the contractors you may or have, I would prefer our staff, our public works guys, put those signs up.
Completely understood.
I've seen a lot of strange signs out there. That's part of my day job. And yeah, so, no offense.
Untaken.
So will, will the planning commission have a note sent to the board of commissioners that it is the recommendation of the planning commission to suggest?
I would say so long as you motion and second vote that recommendation, I could include that certainly in the letter and in the packet. As Dave said, it would not be part of the conditions of approval. It would be independent.
We've done that before for sure.
Yes.
And I will make that motion.
A second.
Can, I missed that. It was basically formalizing what I just asked them.
To recommend it to the?
Board of commissioners.
Post the speed limit.
To make them aware, although we have one. It makes it.
In the packet.
Yeah.
And so there's been a motion and a second?
Yep.
Right.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. All right. To summarize this project that you've been in front of the board several times now, you're willing to worked with the staff, I don't have any, I personally don't have any other comment.
I have one clarification I would request, I guess. I saw a comment in the letter concerning the additional right-of-way we were proposing to dedicate at the, what I'll call the railroad track end of the property. I believe the way I interpreted the comment was you do not want to take, or potentially do not want to take all of that right-of-way at this time, but you wanna reserve it for the future? Is that, okay, so I believe we'd reflect on the plans, the local road right-of-way, all the way down to the end of the property then, and then show this additional piece as a future.
That's correct, yes.
So slightly different from what we show now, but the same area, just two different ways.
Exactly, yes.
I just wanna make sure I understood the language in the letter correctly.
No problem. Thanks.
Does anyone have any further questions or comments regarding this application?
And you're okay with all the twenty-one conditions?
Yes, we've reviewed them.
Does anyone want to make a motion? Oh, does the public have any comments? Online? No comments? Someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to grant the preliminary final plan review.
Second.
Condition of all the conditions being met.
On the conditions. I will second that.
Greg, would you like to do a roll call?
Sure. Trevor Donbach.
Aye.
Andrew Flag.
Aye.
Brian Height. Diane Kelly.
Aye.
Mark Luth.
Aye.
David Wilson.
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we're on our third project on the subdivision review agenda. That is Ridge Farm Final Plan Phase One B. Greg, would you like to do the staff presentation?
This is an application to develop the properties located at 1802 North Cedar Crest Boulevard, which is the northwest corner of the Walbert Avenue-Cedar Crest Boulevard intersection. The plan proposes five apartment buildings containing a total of, oh, it's more than six units. How many units is it, Jason? Sixty, thank you. Sixty units. Also fourteen two-unit dwelling units, which is seven pairs of twins, the continuation of Yellowstone Road, Road M and its intersection with Cedar Crest Boulevard, and a portion of Road H, Basins 3 and 4, and the associated stormwater management facilities, all on a 13.2 acre portion of the 31.9644 acre tract. The property is zoned R10 and TND residential cluster overlay district, and is being developed as a TND residential cluster overlay. K Walbert LLC is the equitable owner and applicant. The community development department recommends the planning commission take the plan under advisement to afford the applicant the time necessary to address the reviewing agency's comments. Our recommendation is contingent upon the applicant granting the township a waiver from the timeframe in which to act upon the plan. Both the planning commission's soft deadline and the BOC hard deadline to act on the plan is September 30th, 2022.
Would the applicant like to make their presentation?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, nice to see everyone again. Jason Engelhardt with Lang and Engineering. Mr. Preston is not available tonight, but I will, I'm not going to play an attorney on TV. So this is Ridge Farm Phase 1B. This is the second time that we've submitted a final plan for this project. Again, it's consistent with the preliminary plan and the preliminary plan approval. It just provides more detailed documents and drawings than we had in the preliminary plan stage. As Greg mentioned, there are sixty total apartment units in the five buildings, as well as fourteen of the twin units to the north. We're extending Yellowstone Road as part of the project, and ultimately making the connection between Yellowstone and Cedar Crest at a later time. The site area for Phase 1B is 13.2 acres. It includes some active open space areas. Probably the most relevant is the kind of center courtyard area in the, located within the center of the apartment units. We're also extending the streetscape. If you remember, Phase 1A creates all the streetscape to the east along Walbert, and this extends it to the west and also up Cedar Crest to the limit of this phase. In the plans that were included, there's some detailed landscape plans by Mr. Jackson that detail all the elements that go into the open space. There was a lot more thought put into that. We previously didn't have a review from Mr. Comida. This, we currently, we've now received his review. It's fairly modest as far as a review, but he is asking for some additional details on the plans, so we're going to provide those. The... So concerning where we stand as far as things like permitting, this phase, Phase 1B, is incorporated into the Suits planning approval that we already have for the whole first phase. The NPDS permit also exists for this phase. And logically, this makes sense for us to move forward here, because all the utilities come down the hill and tie into Walbert and Cedar Crest in this area. The stormwater in this area has to be built first before we begin to move up the hill. So, so again, it provides the continuity of the streetscape and a lot of the improvements that were proposed. All the units, the apartment units are alley accessed. So you've got parking in the rear, as well as garage spaces in the rear. So it feels a little bit more like a townhouse from that perspective. The, I know one of the concerns of Mr. Adams and some of the review that Dave had on the architecture was they wanted to make sure it was consistent with the design manual that was approved. So I know the architect, Martin Architecture, has been working on that. I've seen a preview of an update to the architecture that I'm sure will find its way to the township soon. But we know that we've got that, it's open, that we need to work through. The, as far as the township review letters, many of them have been addressed. Things like the geotechnical review is complete, the lighting review has been deemed acceptable. And a number of the township committees have looked at it and said that we've, it's acceptable at this point. There are a number of things, like in Tony's review letter, that we need to take care of. There's some ADA-related items that they'd like more detail on. There's a few stormwater items. So we're intending to take some time and address what's open there. Rob Hoffman's here with me tonight, so we know there's some, as part of the last submission, we submitted a traffic study for this phase specifically. There's some comments relative to that that we know we need to address. So we intend to do that moving forward. And I'm sure we can extend the decision timeline. I'll talk to Mr. Preston about that, handle that going forward. So, oh yeah, and there's one other. So as part of the preliminary plan approval and the discussions relative to this phase, there was an improvement along Chelmette that needed to be made. It was a traffic calming improvement, so there was a sketch that was prepared. So that's something else that we need to provide to you. We were surveying that area recently. That's been completed. So in the next submission of this phase for review, we'll include a formal design of those improvements. So that was at the intersection of Redwood and Chelmette. There's some handicap ramps, some crosswalks, and some signage that was going to be proposed. That'll be provided going forward. So I think we're here tonight just to update you on where we stand with things, and let you know what our game plan going forward, and answer any questions you have.
Jason, I just had a question for clarification. The road connecting to Cedar Crest across the top there?
Yes.
It sounded like you said that'll be done later. I just want to clarify that it'll be done as part of this Phase 1B.
The road itself will be constructed, but it won't be open until Cedar Crest, until the full extent of those Cedar Crest improvements are done.
Okay, there were some concerns about having that access open, and once you make the right-in, right-out at Yellowstone? So there was a timing issue. The residents may not have access to Cedar Crest without the connector road.
Right.
Yeah. So Yellowstone, if you're coming down Yellowstone and you want to go Cedar Crest south?
Yes.
You can't get there without that connection into that new road.
All the way around.
Yeah.
To the west side of the development.
You have to go all the way out, yeah.
Right. You have to make your way to Brandywine.
Okay.
And that was, that was addressed, and Rob can probably speak to that better than I can, but that was addressed. That was, that was one of the reasons why the study was asked.
Because I know that was part of discussions that we had with the homeowners association as part of that timing issue, so we can dig into that a little bit more. It's just something that's on our radar.
Okay. And again, there are...
I just have a quick question. Was it ever committed to opening it during Phase 1B? And now we're hearing that it may not?
We have to do some digging. There was, there were discussions with the homeowners association, and their big, one of the biggest concerns was that access at that time. So we'll circle back and kind of double-check that.
Yeah, I'm just concerned if the developer had committed to doing it and now is not, whether, and what that represents.
Yes, we will certainly circle back on that.
So there seems to, you'll have to get into the weeds.
Yeah, and I, I assume the potential changes are you're not making the improvements to Cedar Crest, so that right turn onto Cedar Crest won't be in the final condition until all the Cedar Crest improvements.
Yeah, and again, I think Rob can probably speak to that better than I can.
So that's, it has to do... Good evening, Rob Hoffman with TPD. It has to do with the phasing of the way the PennDOT work comes online because of the cut that's going to happen on the hill with Cedar Crest. You can't really do that connection now because you're going to have to undo it at some point. So as, the way the PennDOT approval for the phasing of the roadwork for the project as a whole is laid out, the Cedar Crest work is, becomes, it's what we're calling Phase 3 of the PennDOT work. So that's when that connection would be made because of the work that we're doing on that hill, and the way you have, the way the construction needs to be done, the cut that needs to be done.
Is there a possibility that Yellowstone could remain the full movement that it is until the Cedar Crest road access at Harvest is opened?
So that, the work on Walbert Avenue west of Cedar Crest is Phase 2, and that's, all of that work is being done in conjunction with when this Phase 1B would come online. So the fact that that reconfiguration is done and permitted by PennDOT to have that left-out movement restricted, we could have that discussion with them, and Tony, you could, you know, you could probably assist if that's something we want to push forward. But I think, I think that's, candidly, I think that's going to be a heavy lift with PennDOT to get that. I think they're going to want to see the final, what's going to be the final permitted condition is what gets constructed.
And we can certainly get in the conversations with PennDOT, but I want to do some digging on agreed-upon with the homeowners association.
Understood.
Yep.
It's pretty clear, there's concern about that long movement.
Understood.
We understand. There's a lot of coordination that has to be done, and some of it is PennDOT as well, right?
Yes, and I mean, the developer and the developers team have brought us to the table and brought the township to the table, so it's been somewhat, pretty open conversation, but it's definitely a concern of the township, you know, as this is phased and how this is built, and making sure school buses and full axes is available, especially going up to the high school and just everyone's movement. So a lot of concern on the township's part, and we'll definitely voice our opinion with PennDOT, and I, you know, the developer and everyone was going to have to come up with a plan that satisfies everyone, so.
Where is the school bus stop on this side of the development for this phase? Is there one in this section?
There is one, and, but I honestly, I don't recall. I'd have to look back at the overall plan to see where we, where we located it, but I'll make sure I do that.
Okay, thank you.
So because we're online and we have the virtual meeting, nobody online can hear unless it's in a microphone. So it was, an audience member discussed where the existing bus stop is in the, along Chelmette.
Right, right, and again, we had coordinated the bus, proposed bus stop locations for the new development with the school district. They specified locations. I should designate it on this, this plan, and I will for the, for the next revision. There was one in this.
Thank you.
All right, so to summarize, there's a lot of coordination in, that still has to be done with the traffic yet. That, you agree, does that seem accurate?
Obviously, we have Tony's letter and they have comments in there that we have to, we have to address. And, you know, we'll get with staff to discuss the concerns with respect to Yellowstone and Brandywine. So yeah, that'll, that'll all have to be coordinated moving forward.
Great.
Right, from a, from a general planning, outside of the traffic issue, which is an important and a big issue, the general planning elements of the drawings, most of that has been taken care of, but there are some items that we're going to address between now and the next time we see them.
Yeah, I think a key item is the design standards and the renderings. We would like to see those at the next meeting. But I understand this has been a few, few years in, in terms of design, and I know you've gone with these final plans a few iterations. All right. Does anyone in the, the audience have any comments? If so, if you could come up to the podium?
Robert Hayne, 1731 Independence Court. I want to, I was going through all the notes from tonight's that they publish. And what really caught my attention is, I use Brandywine in Walbert every day. And they're trying to restrict left hands at Yellowstone, so everyone's going to have to come up, Chelmette, and then go on to Brandywine. And it says, it says right in the plans, it's 23 seconds now, which usually, but a lot of times you wait minutes. If there's an accent 22, it's even worse, and it's going to go to 40 seconds. And they didn't even do the traffic study during peak hours with school in session. So... That intersection right now is really bad. You could have two cars pull up. One wants to go right, one wants to go left on Brandywine and Walbert. They both block each other's view. It's really dangerous. I'm old-fashioned. I walk to the den, and sometimes I walk to Target. You cannot cross there. People are supposed to stop. You're in the crosswalk. They do not, and it's going to only get worse. Let me see what else. That covered most of it. My wife complains about it a lot, especially when we had kids. You get to that intersection, you got to turn left, you can wait minutes. I don't know where they're getting the 23 seconds from, and it's going to double, and it's going to get worse, and there's not going to be a time to back up. So I read through the report. I saw that, you know, there were some mentions about there are issues and they should address them. But I get to the end, and I look at Robert Hoffman's recommendations. There's not a mention of that intersection. And it's just going to be a mess as soon as this gets started. There's going to be cars backing up, double backing up, and it's going to get backed up. So I hope you hold them to do something about that intersection.
I think it's important to know, as much as the township can do and Tony can do it, it is at PennDOT Road. And ultimately, PennDOT makes the decisions. They will take some input from the township. But at the end of the day, PennDOT owns that road.
But the township's in, in contact with them, telling them this is going to be an issue.
They might not get everything they want or everything you want. They're going to try their best to get it, but ultimately, it's bureaucracy that they're dealing with.
We, we have communicated to staff and engineering, and Tony has a seat at the table, correct? And has been involved, so it's somewhat out of our purview, but we have spoken and, you know, we are pushing, but it's a PennDOT road, so they have the final say.
And, and those concerns are raised in Tony's letter, so it's part of, it's definitely on our radar.
And we send our letter to PennDOT, so I mean, we're, we're doing what we can. I think everyone does recognize it, but...
Was it in the packet?
Yes, our letter was in the packet.
All right.
No problem. Thank you.
I just had a follow-up comment to Robert's comment about people not stopping at crosswalks. It is a PennDOT road. Can we, as a township, request that they install signs? Because obviously, people do cross from that existing neighborhood to go over to the Target. I don't think we have any of those signs on that road at this time, and I don't know if that's something we can request. I know it's up to them to decide, but...
Sure, sure. I think that's definitely part of it. I mean, I believe that the Brandywine intersection is going to be thoroughly discussed in relation to this. We'll mark, definitely mark down for crosswalk signs, considering that there'll be more traffic at that intersection, and it's an existing crosswalk, so we'll definitely mark that down and mention that to PennDOT.
Thank you.
And I believe, Tony, MUTCD has some, its manual of uniform traffic controlled devices, has some standards in terms of thresholds, warranting crosswalks and whatnot. I believe we would need to...
Correct.
We would need to look into that. We would need to look into that, right?
There's definitely standards and thresholds, as was mentioned. So at some classifications of roads with as many pedestrians, they have this type of signage. Sometimes it gets further, sometimes it gets further. But there's definitely, we'll, we'll mention it to PENDOT and do everything we can to at least alert them with the concerns and get as much as we can from them.
We do have the Lanta bus stop across the street as well.
Correct, correct. It'll all be, we'll, we'll mention it. We could write up a report or minutes from that meeting at that time.
Thank you.
Roseanne Pashati from 1720 Saratoga Court in Country Crossing. I just have some questions about, as I was reading through this or glancing through it before the meeting, how is the traffic going to flow through our development? Are they going to be coming down Cedar Crest Boulevard, making a right, south on Cedar Crest, making a right onto Harvest Way and then connecting left onto Yellowstone? And then either going left onto Shawmet to get to Brandywine or all the way down to Walbert and making a left? I mean, is that Harvest Way connecting directly to Cedar Crest Boulevard so that people can avoid that intersection?
No, I mean, I don't believe, I think it's connected to serve that new community and provide access to the existing country crossing. But I think ultimately, we want everybody to go down to the light and make a right on Walbert Avenue if that's where they want to go.
Right.
If you're heading south.
That's what you want them to do.
The intention is not to draw people into that neighborhood to make a right onto Walbert Avenue.
Yeah, what's being, like, how do you know that's not going to happen though?
Well, I mean, you could, you could probably, what if that question, give an intersection as a, is it really shorter? Probably not.
Now, the, the other thing with the design standards of the road, so when we have narrower roads, more turns, tighter turns, that slows traffic. So the intent, and it's all kind of baked into the design, is it's not going to be quicker to cut through. It'll be quicker to go on the open road with less turns and wider turning radius, higher speeds. So that, that's kind of, this is general traffic design standard.
My concern was that Shawmet has a playground on it, so increased traffic around the playground.
Yeah, so the traffic calming measures that Jason brought up are around that playground. So the idea is to do some striping to calm traffic and slow speeds when they get to that intersection, that area of country crossings.
As a person who comes south on Cedar Crest Boulevard every day, I can tell you making a right onto Walbert is not a problem generally ever.
Yeah, but now you're going to have a thousand extra, you're going to have a thousand extra residents.
Yeah, but the intersection is going to be improved too to handle the extra cars. So it, it's going to be a big difference from what it is now.
So, and, and Jason mentioned that when he comes back, he'll have the details on that traffic calming around the park. So, oh, there they are.
Is this for me? Is this for me?
Yeah, well, that's, I had a conceptual, the conceptual plan that we had discussed. I, I had a copy with me.
Oh, okay.
So just an additional comment. So on Shawmet, there will be no, the stop sign was, no plan to remove that?
I, I'll have to double check with the plans, but I'm pretty sure the stop signs stay, yeah.
Yeah, I don't like to use it just because of that. So that's.
Yeah.
And, and when is this going in? Because on his side, it hasn't even started. When is Phase, this is 1B or 1A, 1B, when is that projected to start?
Jason?
Oh, you're here to ask for a delay.
No, 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 we're certainly not asking.
You're on the spot.
No, we're certainly not asking for a delay. It's hard to, it's hard to give you a specific timing at this point. The.
Delayage, mine with me.
That's, but that's not why I'm here. 1A is, is proceeding, you know, this, at the end of the summer, this fall. 1B will hopefully follow shortly behind. So I don't know at this point whether it's next spring. That's probably the most likely outcome, but it could be later this year. I would, my best guess right now is probably next year.
Thanks. And the stormwater, have all of the storm, like, the last time I saw one of these plans, I haven't been at all the meetings, but there was supposed to be a storm, the basins have been moved. Is the township comfortable that we're not going to have flooding? Because that problem has been fixed recently. Thank you. I don't know who did it. It just happened though with the swales being adjusted. But we had problems with that for a couple of years. I don't want it to come back.
So the, the swale issue, we did ask the, the developer to go out and kind of address some of that and channelize it into that headwall. So they, they did do that. And then a lot of this stormwater, basically anywhere you see a new road, there's going to be stormwater infrastructure. That's going to pipe it over to the basins. So any water that normally comes down that hill will be caught by the road and channeled into their system.
And, and this project is subject to Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection permits. They have very strict stormwater permits. And my understanding is all the stormwater has been designed and reviewed, has been reviewed by the Conservation District, which is delegated by DEP to do the review. Is, is that correct, Jason?
Yes, as well as your engineer. But also with the individual phases, he's looking at each phase to say, to confirm that what the final conditions are going to see is in the temporary condition, which is again, each phase would effectively is a temporary condition, that it'll work in both situations. So, and again, in this case, as Dave was pointing out, the stormwater here is, is that currently comes off that hillside is going to get captured and taken into the stormwater basins here. So it's only going to continue to improve for, for the properties.
If, if you're familiar with just up the road, 40th and Walbert, before they put in the hills at Winchester there, there was often stormwater issues with water coming across the road. You'd get a lot of flooding coming across Walbert. Now, that doesn't happen because the development there has caught the water and pipes it all into basins where it's, you know, detained. So we, I, I see that a lot in the developments the last 20 years where people are concerned about new development causing more stormwater. Generally, it's the reverse. So this should take care of that.
And in terms of traffic calming, I, I think in this township, there has been some concern about some existing roads in the township that are very wide. And then you have cars whipping through there. So making the roads more narrow, I, I think that's something we've learned to help slow down traffic and, and make it a safer situation. Now, I think there's still a lot of work that has to be done in terms of the traffic maneuvering, but there has been a lot done to date. Still a ways to go yet, though.
Please come in.
Walbert Avenue. Is there another entrance, is there an entrance into the new development right before Yellowstone? Now, I'm not really good at reading maps, but this little yellow thing looks like there is a road right before Yellowstone.
No.
No.
What is that?
They're sidewalks.
They're sidewalks. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience or is there anyone online that would like to participate?
Nothing in the chat.
All right. Any final thoughts or, or questions?
Be back here.
I think there's.
Oh, make a motion to table.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Just to have Jim Preston email it to me, as he always does.
All right, we're on agenda item number six, transportation infrastructure update.
Thank you. Two things, two items. So at the end of last month, there was a meeting with multiple township, emergency services, our office, and PENDOT regarding the 309 and Tillman Street interchange project. The meeting itself, the reason for the meeting was to show all the detours that would be coming in the construction of the new interchange. Obviously, it was a quick overview for all the changes that are happening. We were able to get a copy of all the plans. We're currently reviewing in our office and we're going to set a meeting with all, all the EMS workers in the township, well, not all the EMS workers, but all the departments in the township, that we can go over those plans, make sure that although they may function from a PENDOT standpoint, that they function from an emergency services standpoint. So we'll be looking for additional preemption or when there's a one-lane detour, what does that mean? It's emergency services. So we are in the process of doing that. Our review, we'll eventually get a meet, a meeting with the township so that everyone's on the same page before it gets too far down the line and we're left with the problem, for lack of better terms. Second is, meeting took place, there's going to be a rail feasibility study in the valley. PENDOT's undertaking the study. They're going to look to see, probably going to be about a year, but they're going to look to see if there's a need or desire or any feasibility to have either rail going north, you know, Newark, New, New York Airport area, Philadelphia, Harrisburg area. So that will be coming. I know there's a lot of difference of opinions regarding that, but there's federal money for railway. So that's going to be something that's going to be looked into for the value of a rail line.
Has that been looked into, like, numerous times and then it gets shut down every time?
They did a study in 2010. They did another study at 2015. However, this study will meet federal regulations. So it's a different lift. That's why it's going to take 12 to 14 months. The big player in this is Norfolk Southern because they own most of the rail.
And they don't want to give it up for pedestrian use, right?
Well, I could go off and I don't think it's appropriate for me to comment. So those are my two, two points.
Great.
Tony, can I just make a comment about the Tillman Street project?
Yes.
Do we have any idea how long that construction is expected to be?
I think that's two to three years, I think, is what I remember from the meeting. I'll be sure, but I believe it's about two to three-year construction project. Again, I think there's five major phases, what I'll call it. There's obviously a lot of temporary lanes and temporary turn lanes, things like that. But I think there's pretty much five major phases in terms of this half of the interchange, one way on this street, constructing this road. It's, it's a large project.
Have they indicated a start date?
They had an indication and then it got pushed back because there was some utility conflicts. I would see late next year to start if things go well.
Regarding the lane closures or restrictions down to 1, if those areas are going to affect businesses, is there notice that the township can give in as far in advance as we can to those businesses so they can plan inventory and advertise detours needed, that sort of thing, to, to kind of partner with them? I don't know if that's something we've done in the past, but I've heard a few complaints from another road that's closed in the township. I don't want to name names, but restrictions were detrimental to the business because of that. So I didn't know if we could get ahead of it with, when we've got.
Sure. No, that's, that's a good point. I mean, it's generally along the Tillman corridor under where the, the interchange itself is. I believe, I hate to say it because I don't know confirmed, but I believe it's a stop indicated. So it's going to be one way, sometimes this way, sometimes that way. But um, once the plans become finalized, there will definitely be an opportunity to have them published by PENDOT and then alerts being made for more specific to when the construction and the detours will, will come.
Okay. Thank you.
And they're required to have public meetings. Sometimes they're virtual, sometimes they're in person. It depends on the project.
Great. It looks like we're a little ahead of schedule. Could we take a look at the zoning ordinance or we went through three projects tonight?
I was going to leave, but you're all welcome to do it.
All right. We, we had a, we had three pretty in-depth projects. I think we're going to.
End.
Hunt the zoning.
But what's on the agenda for next month?
Ah, yes. We have two plan submissions. They are both sketch plans. One is the Parkland School District New Operations Center, which is going in, oh, right around Orfield Middle Schools. It's the east side of Stadium Drive, right around their stadium. And then the other one is 1430 Eck Road Outdoor Storage, which is across from the two Crackersport Road DC warehouses north of the railroad tracks. That's the two sketches. That's all we got.
All right. Agenda item number eight, courtesy of the floor. Anyone online? Great. Agenda item number nine. Anyone like to make a motion?
Some of them.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.